Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Kerstetter.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Stam.
Here.
Call Stam for the invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you tonight on behalf of the City of Valley Center. Lord, I thank you for this group of leaders, this board, and the decisions that they have to make. Lord, we just pray that you would be with them in their conversations tonight. And, Lord, as they approve the city administrator, Lord, I pray that you would just have your hand up on the decisions that need to be made. Lord, I pray that you would help everything to go well and that you would be made known in this community. Lord, we just thank you for all that you're doing. In your name we pray. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with great care and justice for all.
Be seated. Moving on to the approval of tonight's agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion and questions? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to approval of the minutes from the December 2nd meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes of the December 2nd, 2025 regular council meeting as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve the minutes of the December 2nd council meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to no presentations tonight, so public forum. Is there anyone here from the public that'd like to address the council on anything that's not on the agenda? If not, we're moving on to new business. Resolution 806-25, update of the Valley Center boundary legal description.
Good evening. This is just the yearly update to the city boundary. We've done this the last few years. We update the boundary based on any annexations or de-annexations from the city limits through 2025. So if this is passed, Christie will send on to the county and they will update their.
Dale?
This one's the biggest change was the annexation by interurban.
Correct.
Any other questions, comments, motion to approve?
Motion to adopt resolution 806-25 describing city of Valley Center boundaries.
Second. Have a motion and second to approve resolution 806-25. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to item B, title, let's see, five, six, six program approval.
Charlene sent this to me for approval. It does need to be adopted on behalf of the city. Like she said, and like I put in here, we do have to adopt it just because of limited minority or non-English speaking. She said, I don't anticipate having very many, but we do have to have it approved. So for the bus that, that whole program, I mean, you've seen all the documents that she has had to go through and all the hoops. So this is just one more hoop that she has to have on file and approved by the council. So I'll answer any questions if I'm able to.
Gina?
Just curiosity. Do we have a community relations director?
You, me, I guess. Okay. I mean, yes. Probably I would refer first to Charlene as someone who's running the program, but yeah, then it would come to myself or the city administrator. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Motion to approve Title VI program for the City of Valley Center. An authorized mayor to sign.
Second.
Have a motion and second to approve Title VI program. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to Axon body camera contract.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So before you deny it, is the memo, I won't read through the memo, just maybe some of the highlights or talk about it. So our contract was not up, and many of you were on council when we made the previous or the current contract. But we were at the point where we were due a refresh on our body cameras. We'd actually, typically they do it every two and a half years. I'd prolong that a little bit. So we have maybe a little over a year left on the contract. And so in talking to our representative with Axon about that and what that was going to look like and getting those to us, they, he started talking about, you know, some of the new technology and suggested maybe we ought to look at a new contract. The price, as you see in the memo, is, on average goes up, the inflation, six to eight percent each year. That's not always that way, but often it is. And we've seen that. I've seen that using Axon products from the very first time we ever bought tasers to, the prices have definitely increased as the technology gets better. So before you deny it, is a 10-year contract, and in doing that includes professional licenses for each user. The professional license allows for a lot more technology as in, like, and probably the main technology that we would utilize out of that would be the, the auto dictation or whatever. It would transcribe, auto transcription's the word I'm looking for, sorry. It would transcribe the video, everything that happens in the video. One of the other things we're looking at is, is the AI and the report writing. So with that, that would be totally new to us. We have two licenses now that'll let us transcribe video, but only two people can do it on their cameras. So I do it for one of my administrators and I do it for my investigator. But, but with the AI, they would be able to write the reports essentially. And, and they showed me an example of it and what they do. I know it sounds scary and, and me being, you know, the age I am and not used to AI, you know, it, it can be a little scary, but there's a lot of safeguards built into this. So the, the video, it goes through the video, the AI does, it writes the report from the video, but it, it asks questions. Like if they forget something in there, it will ask a question, it'll ask the officer to fill it out. And then the officer has to go in, and I set the amount, but they would have to go in and do a certain amount of changes, like 20%. They would have to go in and change. And, and there's other safeguards built into that, like you can't copy and paste, doesn't allow until you've made those changes and you've answered every question. So it also, from what the, the representatives were telling me, you know, it makes the officers slow down a little bit when they're out on a crime scene, for example. They're talking a lot more as they're walking through, they're talking about what they're seeing because they know their cameras are going to pick that up. So it provides better detail in the reports in the end, which is something that we're always looking for, more detail. And so I wanted to bring this to you tonight. I'd talked to Clint and I think he's prepared to talk a little bit about the financial side as well. But I had talked to him a little bit about this. 10-year contract initially with me was a little concerning, but when they start talking about the savings and what we could save during that 10-year period, it made it a little more appealing. This does include new cameras every two and a half years, and it's always going to be their latest, greatest camera. So we're not behind in technology. We don't have to pay extra for some new feature. It, it's included, whatever the latest body camera is, that's what we get each time. Axon's been around for a while. I can tell you, we've utilized three different brands of cameras now in my time here, and this has by far been the best camera system we've had. Most user-friendly, the least amount of problems, very little, actually no downtime so far, knock on wood. But it's, it's been a good system for us. So I will stand for any questions you may have.
Dale?
You said you have, it's 19 cameras. Is that, I guess I don't know how your, your procedure works as far as, you have more than 19 officers. Is that?
No, we don't at the moment.
You know, okay. So if you, we had gotten more than 19.
I don't carry a body camera.
Okay. I guess what I'm asking is if we ever need more than 19, is that?
We would have to add to it.
We'd have to add to this contract. Okay. But you don't have to have 19 out in the field at one time?
Correct.
Or these, do these go home with them?
Some do. They're assigned. You, a lot of the officers will dock them at night. So they, the docking does two things. It uploads all the videos to the cloud if it hasn't already done so, and then it charges the battery. So they also have, they have little docking stations in their car that'll do the same thing.
Okay. And?
Some choose to leave them there so they don't forget them. Others take them home and bring them back every day.
And that, this is separate from the vehicle cameras, correct?
It is. Well, they're both Axon, but it's separate.
It's a separate contract.
Cameras, the technology hasn't changed near as often.
Okay.
These are the more important ones. Not that having car cameras aren't important, but these are going to go everywhere the officer goes. Side note to this, and somewhat separate, but, but with Axon, I recently signed an agreement with Sedgwick County 911 that allows them to track the GPS on everybody's body camera. So if an officer gets out, something happens, they're struggling, the 911 operators are going to be able to tell exactly where the officer's at, to be able to give the incoming officers their locations.
Okay. Second question I have is, when you mentioned AI, it gave me a little nervousness, anxiousness.
I agree.
Is there any legal reasons why you shouldn't be using that? Have you talked to like?
I think.
The judge or DA or anybody that says, is there anything, any reason why we shouldn't be more careful?
I think the fear is what AI you.
Yeah, you can find a lot of false stuff.
Because there, there's a lot of AI, there's a lot of AI out there that's free, that's open to everybody. And you're right, it can produce false things. This AI is specific to this program. It, it's going through the camera and the officers are forced because they have to make changes. And so they're forced to go through and read the entire thing to check for accuracy. Until they do that and make the changes that, that are required, then they, they can't save it, they can't print it.
Okay.
They can't submit it.
Are there any other agencies, local, or agencies for lack of a better term, in Sedgwick County that are using the same software?
I don't, the AI, I know Wichita was looking at it, and I think Sedgwick County's been talking about it. I don't know if they have it yet, though.
Okay, I just.
There's a lot of people, you, this is pretty new.
Right.
There's other agencies I know, western part of the United States that are already using it and elsewhere. I'm not sure in Sedgwick County. And a lot of our systems will talk. I mean, that's part of the advantage of Axon is it's so much easier for us to share with other agencies the videos.
That makes sense. I'm just, I'm still worried about the AI part. That's, that's what I'm hung up.
It was really impressive. I've used AI for simple things, signing challenge coins, things like that, you know. I've used it just for, for little things. And I think this is different from, well, it's not that I think. I know this is different from the demo that they gave me.
Okay. Amy?
Couple of questions. I know you said you've tried three different body camera companies in the past, and, and this was by far better. I'm curious if we got any competitive bids?
Not this go around, no. Not, not this time, not for this contract.
I, I know that you favor this company and I understand why. I'm just, I feel like it'd give us a little more negotiating power with them if we did have competitive bids.
So when it comes, I try to negotiate. And in fact, I, the number is a little incorrect at the end. So I got an additional 6,000 off. It's not a lot when you look at the overall number, but I, I did get that because I'm constantly negotiating things like that. There's a lot more advantages to having this. So when you, like our, our lights in our cars, if we turn on our stage, we have three stages on our lights. We turn it to stage two, it automatically activates our cameras. If an officer pulls a taser out and enables the taser, it automatically enables the cameras. There's, there's a lot of advantages to utilizing this company. I don't know any other, there is no other camera system out there that would do that with our tasers and our light, well, maybe lights, but not tasers.
You said, you said we can share information with other agencies. Is, is that, is this like the, the standard in the area? Do most agencies?
Some agencies, some of the smaller ones don't have Axon. Wichita, Sedgwick County both have Axon. We've, we've utilized the sharing to be able to share the links back and forth on videos. Like if we assist them with a case, we'll send them our videos through that link. And they've done the same for us when they assist us on cases. I know Park City, some of the other agencies our size, it's, this is the.
And do we pay extra for this AI feature? I, I don't see it line item.
I think it's in the contract there. There is a, a pretty much, so this, and the reason I'm bringing it to you tonight, and the way we initially wrote it up was because if we sign up by the end of the year, we get an extra discount of $107,000. So that's why I'm bringing it to you tonight, before the end of the year. And asked for the wording the way we did with Clint, was to be able to, if, if we can do it, if council approves it, be able to make that savings. The AI portion over the 10 years is 111,000. So that initial savings of 107,000 almost covers that price.
Dale?
This next question is for Mr. Miller, probably. So the first year's 5,000 bucks and then 46,000 and change after that.
2027 with that extra 6,000 will actually be 40,000, then 46,000 starting in 2028.
Okay. So we have this in the budget. I guess I get, Lloyd might have known this one, too. We're able to cover this in the budget for next year.
Well, right now, the budget impact for next year would be 5,000, which is not very hard to make up, plus, I mean, barely fully staffed. So.
That's, yeah.
I know that doesn't sound good, but the reality is we don't use up all their payroll salary most years. So 5,000 isn't very concerning. My hesitation on a 10-year contract was simply, is the technology going to change during that? Dr. Lloyd, I talked to Matt, they both said that this is absolutely the best on the market and they're comfortable with the launch. You know, because a lot's changed. You know, you go back to 2015 and I love that stuff, you know. So things move pretty quickly. But this company seems to be way out in front of everybody else. We're going to have to have body cameras. We're going to have them. Right now, they're the best in the game. So I'm comfortable with it. The budget impact next year would be 5,000 and I'd have to budget in 40,000.
Okay. So you're gonna, you're gonna be able to absorb that extra 40K?
I have not started on the 2027 budget yet, but it's not a concern of mine right now.
Okay. And then I like the two and a half years, every two and a half years we get an upgrade. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Motion to approve 10-year contract with Axon for body worn cameras, equipment and software at a total cost of 400, do I need to abbreviate that, chief, with the $6,000 savings?
No, if you, you could do that or say no more than that price.
All right. For total cost not to exceed 419,970, 11 cents. Continued upon Financial Director's final year-end financial analysis.
Second. Have a motion and second to approve the contract with Axon body cameras. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, I move that we, we need a, a motion to go into executive session for about 10 minutes.
Okay. Move to recess into executive session for 10 minutes to discuss an individual employee's performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel matter exception, KSA 75-4319B1. Included in the executive session in addition to council members is the mayor, the acting co-city administrators, Clint Miller and Kristy Cruthers.
Second.
Have a motion and second to go into executive session. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Executive session until 10:30. motion carried. Executive session till 10:30.
No action was taken in executive session, but I have a motion to make now that we're